Good to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the June 24th meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid interfering with our meeting. We, before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off wireless communication devices and mute your microphones. That's what I wanted, to mute your microphones to avoid any technical interference with the meeting. Also, we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. Please listen to the following announcement regarding interpretation services during tonight's meeting. Will the, uh, begin the recording, please?
Interpreting Services, Servicios de Interpretación. Simultaneous Interpretation is available in Spanish. La Interpretación Simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap Language Interpretation. Tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos, tres puntos. Toque Language Interpretation. Toque Spanish. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded for those who cannot observe now. And information on how to view this and other meetings of the board will be posted on our board webpage. Before we begin, I'd like to bring a message to the public that we did not have executive session this evening. We spent an hour debating the legal services of a contractor. And we wasted technically an hour of taxpayers' time, unfortunately. However, we're trying to maintain the compliance with the law and parliamentary procedure. A legal firm was brought on, but to keep down confusion and wasting the public's time, we will move forward without legal counsel nor a parliamentary procedure, a person who provides parliamentary procedure advice. With that being said, we will move into our prayer and pledge of allegiance. And again, I apologize to the public for wasting your time. We will move into our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our board member, Montero, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Yes, ma'am. Let us pray. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move into the roll call. Board members, please unmute your microphone for the roll call. Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members and administration. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Mrs. Am?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present. Did you mean?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Miller?
We have a quorum. We will now move into the adoption of the agenda for June 24th, 21, board meeting. For the public's information, item 4.1, which did appear on board docs, has been removed from the agenda because of concern in terms of its submission. So it has been removed from the agenda. Moving on, well, can I get a motion to accept the agenda? Absent, item 4.1. So moved second? It has been moved in second that we adopt the agenda for June 24th, 2021 board meeting. Any discussion?
Woman Ahmed had her hand up. I'm not sure.
She took it down.
Okay.
No discussion. We will move forward. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The most, the eyes have it. We will now move into item 2.6, approval of the board meeting minutes for April 28th. Do you want to vote on them individually or as a group? But I will call them, those that we have for April 28th, 2021, the special board meeting. May 26th, 2021, another special board meeting. June 4th, special board meeting, and June 10th, board work session minutes. May have a, do you want to do them individually or would you like to do them as a group?
I make a motion to approve the minutes dates as read by Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Then we will approve these minutes as a group. So it's been moved in second. Any discussion? No discussion?
I have a question.
Who is that? I didn't see her hand.
This is Burrows.
I didn't see your hand. Wait. Would you raise your hand, find you on the screen? Okay, now I see you. Board member Burrows.
Um. I think there's a typo on April 28th. It says the board met an open session at 5:33. And then it says present, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. This is board members present. Then it also says again, board members present, but it has people who were absent and not present. Then it has Mr. Montero as absent. At what it looks like absent, but he was present. Besides, I I am.
We'll pull those minutes. We will pull those out and have them reviewed because that was a questionable meeting. And there were some questions about the attendance at that meeting. So at this point in time, I can have those minutes pulled unless
Under these minutes, it says everybody was present, and we know that's not the case.
April 28th?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that was a special board meeting, board meeting.
Yes, I was there. It, it has.
You and I must be reading from the separate, I don't have mine in front of me, but I went through those minutes and go on, Mr. Burrows.
So just go on board docs and look at the minutes. It has two categories, both categories say board members present. And then it also lists Mr. Montero as not present. But then it shows the votes that he cast. And so that's, I think it's important for the minutes to be accurate. Like you were not present, but this lists you as present. Ms. Williams was not present. Ms. Boozer Strather was not present.
We're looking at the different minutes because that's, I've read to those twice. Ms. Berkeley?
I see what you're referring to in the top section in the box. Yes, that's a typo. I can fix that. Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Excuse me. What is the typo that you're going to fix versus what Mr. Burrows is questioning?
That in the very top, on the very top of the minutes in the box, there's a section that says board members present. And then there's a list of the board members that participated in that meeting. Underneath that, it's supposed to read board members absent. The, it currently reads board members present. So it has two sections stating that board members are present instead of one section saying board members present and one section stating that board members, which board members were absent. So I'm going to make the adjustment to, from the word present to absent to be clear on who.
That's one, but it also has Mr. Montero as absent.
It has him, it has him present for executive session, which he attended, and has him absent for the public meeting, which he did not attend.
Okay, I guess it just, it says the board met an open session at 5:30. Okay, so this is the open session meeting that you're referring.
Those are only the open session minutes. Yes.
Oh, got it. Okay, understand.
But thank you for catching that original typo. I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Is that it? Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion?
Madam Chair, um, I have a question. Can you find me on the screen?
I'm looking now.
I have my hand up now.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to completely understand what change will be made because there is an open portion of the meeting when you vote to go into executive session. And I believe there is a certain time in which board member Montero arrived, and I wanted to make sure that that was noted on there. And then was there a, and I believe an open session after the executive session was done. And am I hearing that Mr. Montero was not present? I just want clarity. And so maybe we should table that meeting minutes until it can be corrected and, and then we can review the corrections and it should be presented at that time for review and approval.
Thank you. Board member Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I just wanted to know, I think the, the, the main change that needs to be made is that instead of board members present, it needs to be noted that it says board members absent. The rest of the minutes, as I read them, I think are okay, but I'm fine as the, you know, to move forward with approving these minutes with that change that needs to be made. And as a secondary, if that is a friendly moment request, then I'm fine from the second perspective.
Board member Williams, you made a comment to table it. Do you want to pull that back? Or is there some additional clarification that's needed?
She was speaking to the second or I didn't second that, but that was just a suggestion because I think it has to be clear in the record what occurred because this, this meeting is under, currently under review.
Burrows?
Yeah, so the, Ms. Berkeley is correct. I got confused. And so the, the, the only change that I would seek to make is to say board members not present. I, I, I thought, I got confused on one part of it. And so the, the, the only change is at the bottom box should just say board members not present. So that's the, that's okay with the person who made the motion, the second or that's all I'm requesting.
Sam made the motion. Definitely is okay.
Okay.
Ms. Williams, you made a comment about table.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
Thank you. So are we in agreement to approve all of the board minutes from April 28th, May 26th, June 4th, and June 10th?
With proper corrections, yes.
With the proper corrections as indicated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The eyes have it. The minutes are approved. Now we will have the report of the chair. First, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Colleagues, colleagues, at this time, I ask that all of you join me in honoring the memory of the following Prince George's County Public Schools students and staff members with a moment of silence. I will begin with Kaylin Emily Ramirez, a student at Parkdale High School. Kevin Escamilla Escalante, student, International High School at Largo. Richard C. Flanagan Jr., Assistant Principal, Port Towns Elementary School. Jita Stowe, Secondary Classroom Teacher, Surratsville High School. Julian Clark Vance, Building Custodian, Columbia Park Elementary School. Octavia Harris, Teacher, Edward M. Fellege Elementary School. Eva Stenson, Food Service Assistant, Rosa L. Parks Elementary School. I'd also like to acknowledge the passing of the grandmother, I don't have her name, but of our board member, Sheila Adam Stafford, and keep her family in prayer as well as the families that we have just mentioned. Let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
Before ending or going on with my remarks, I am extending a point of personal privilege this evening to our student board member, Nana Jackson. A phenomenal young lady, insightful and thoughtful, mature beyond her age and experience. With her, I, I, I just can't say enough about her. I want the audience, I mean, the public to know that Nana has been selected by the Posy, Posy Foundation, which recruits, identifies, recruits, and trains students who exhibit and demonstrate extraordinary leadership potential. She has received a full ride, not part, a full ride from bachelor's through PhD, MD, whatever it is, in, in the terminal degree. But she has a full ride, everybody. And I'm telling you, it has just been such a pleasure. This is an example of what Prince George's County does. This is Prince George's County proud. And with this, I turn it over to the, I'm just so proud of her. A board member, student board member, Nana Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Can I get a confirmation that you guys can hear me clearly?
Yeah.
Um, okay. So on March 13th, 2020, applications for the 2020, 2021 Prince George's County Student Member of the Board dropped. Notably, this was the Wednesday before everything as we knew it had changed. It was the Wednesday before schools had shut down because of COVID-19. The Wednesday before what we all knew to be normal was offended, turned on its head, and contorted beyond recognition. Most distinctly, I remember pacing in my administrator's office, seeking some sort of solace about how in the world I was going to run a virtual campaign. Suffice to say, my administrator told me that I was wearing a hole in her floor and that she was not going to be writing me a pass to class. Her words were, Nana, you'll figure it out. You always do. And so true to her words, I've figured it out. I set off on an expedition, some would say naively, and others would say boldly and daringly to redefine education as I had known it. My advocacy was premised on a very simple idea. The notion that every student, regardless of their race, age, gender, school, or socioeconomic background, deserves equal access to the resources they need to be successful. My campaign was premised on the idea that for us to have a bolder and brighter PG CPS, the work of this board would need to be grounded in equity, excellence, and empowerment. More than anything, it was written in my heart and inscribed in my mind that these principles would ground my work as a student member of the board and that I would charge headfirst into the demands of my position, armed with the strength of the 130,000-plus students I'd represent. And for a while, I served on a board that was seemingly on the same accord, on the same page, playing the same notes and singing the same tune, only for a faulty chord soon to be struck. Colleagues, members of administration, and members of the public, since the turn of this calendar year, this Board of Education has unequivocally been its own worst enemy. We fail to effectively communicate, only to stand before the public bickering and arguing, not over subsequent policy differences or school operations, but over personal agendas, bad-faced actions, power struggles, and narrative weaving. We play into the us-versus-them mentality, alienating colleagues who might have answered the call to service in a manner different from what we'd like, but answered the call to service nonetheless. And with an affirmative vote of this board, we sanction and approve the nullification of the vote of the student member on multiple occasions, despite the fact that as a board, we nearly unanimously approved the expansion of small voting rights as a state legislative priority. Ladies and gentlemen, we allow this Board of Education and our school system and the people within it to be used as a rag doll and kickball by local and state officials, as a pawn by people who are searching for nothing more than campaign points, campaign dollars, and campaign clout, as my peers would say. The purpose of my words tonight is not to agitate the members of the public. It's not to agitate members of the board. It's not to single out any single individual. I think we're beyond that point. It's certainly not to overshadow our advocacy to enshrine mental health days as a diffuse absence into our administrative procedures. It's not to dampen our budgetary chiseling to ensure that within just a few short years, all of our schools are equipped with full-time therapy support. It's not to cloud the work spurred around the school-to-prison pipeline, equity hubs, and targeted supports for immigrant students and their families. But what this is, and what I mean for it to be, is a call from your colleagues, a call from a product of our school system, your school system, to do better, to be better, and to envision a tomorrow that is better than our today. Collectively, we must come to the realization that with every action we take and decision we make, we are deciding whether we will default or fulfill the promissory note to which every student inherits because we are responsible for each other. We are bound by the obligation that we all possess to ensure that all of our students receive a world-class education and nothing less. The same education that has refused to let me fail despite a myriad of trials and tribulations. The same education that has provided me with the opportunity of attending university without the burden of debt. And the same education that will lead to my eventual return to the gorgeous Prince George's County. Without being said, I want to thank all of you. Genuinely, I mean it, every single one of you for contributing to my experience, not only as a student member of the board, but as a PG CPS student who's been enrolled in the school system for as long as I can possibly remember. I want to thank my peers for allowing me to serve in the position of the 41st student member of this year Board of Education. I want to thank my mom and my family for their support. I want to shout out my Oxford Hill Clippers and my village over there for instilling within me the capacity to lead and to serve. And a whole list of other folks who have undoubtedly woven themselves into the story of my life's journey because the fact of the matter is that I would not be here if not for my village. And that also includes all of you as a part of that community, as a part of that village. It's more than a pleasure and honor to pass the mantle to my very good friend, my successor, your 42nd student member of the Board of Education, Mr. Alvaro Serrano Ruiz, by way of Eleanor Roosevelt High School. He has quite the year ahead of him, but I trust that he will be the student member that he is called to be, not by his colleagues, not by the media, not by local and state officials, but by his heart, his head, his constituents, and time. With that being said, that concludes my remarks, and I can't thank you guys enough. And yeah.
Yay. Beautiful, beautiful. I forgot to mention that Nana will be attending Bucknell. Am I correct? Congratulations, Nana. Let's give her a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Thank you so much. This is Prince George's County proud. This is what our education system is about. This is what we do, our teachers, our administrators, everybody, the villages in our school system. This is what we do. And Nana is a classic, an extraordinary example of it. Thank you, my dear. It's just breathtaking. I have to catch my breath. Oh, next begins the, we, the board will begin its six-week break of the Board of Education. And during this annual break, the board usually refrains from meeting. However, if a need should arise for the board to convene, we will alert the public accordingly. Please continue to check our webpage for any information about any upcoming board meetings. And I anticipate there may be a couple because there will be, there's a task force. The, the chair has created a task force to work on the restructuring of the board office. And once that task force gets its plan and outline together, it will be present, presented to the board as a whole for input so that everyone on the board will have a part of how we will restructure our board office operations. Let's see. With that being said, I think that is all I have to report. Our next item will be the report of the Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Golson. It's on you now.
Thank you so much, Chair Miller, and thank you to our student member of the board, Nana Jackson. It is hard to follow you, but I am going to do my best. Good evening again. During the last board meeting of the school year, I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Education, our staff, students, and families. During the pandemic, we faced many challenges. Board of Education members, I appreciate your support as I had to make tough decisions that were not extremely popular across the state of Maryland. Staff worked tirelessly to provide quality instruction, school meals, and other student supports. And families have supported learning at home and been our co-teachers. With your assistance, students mastered new learning environment, new learning environment, and continue to succeed. Please know that your efforts are greatly appreciated. Next week, we will break ground on six schools made possible through our Blueprint Schools partnership. We will break ground for the New Walker Mill Middle School, Delphi Area Middle School, Kenmore Middle School, Drew Freeman Middle School, the Southern Area K-8 Middle School, and Hyattsville Middle School. We will share highlights via live stream, social media, and our website. Last week, the Excellence in Education Foundation for Prince George's County.
Dr. Golson, you froze, if you can hear me. Dr. Golson, turn your camera off. If you can hear me, raise your hand. Then obviously she can't hear either. Okay.
We lost her. Yeah, we lost her.
Okay, well, we got, we will move forward and come back to Dr. Golson, if that's okay with everyone. Then we will move to 2.9, the Policy and Governance Committee Annual Report for the school year 2020, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Board member Ahmed, the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, please present your report.
Thank you. Good evening, colleagues and members of the public. For those of you that are watching that may not be familiar with the role of the Policy and Governance Committee, it is one of three standing committees of the Board of Education, and it is charged with facilitating the short and long-range strategic planning for the school system. And that happens through the development and implementation of innovative board policies. We also take the lead in developing the legislative agenda for the board to consider. Over the past year, our committee has worked extremely hard to take action on over 22 policies, 14 pieces of legislation, and initiatives to address the school-to-prison pipeline and police reform inside PG CPS. You can see all of our work highlighted in the attached report on board docs. And a number of items are also on our agenda for today for first reader. I wanted to thank the hard work of members of the committee, specifically Pamela Boozer Strather, who served as Chair of the Committee from July 2020 to December 2020. Joshua Thomas, who served as Vice Chair of the Committee from January 2021 to the present. Board member Burrows, who has repeated Board Member Burrows, who has repeatedly translated his passion for students of PGCPS into thoughtful policy proposals, and our Student Member of the Board Nina Jackson, who has represented the hundred and thirty thousand students in our school system well in her role on the committee. I also want to give a special thank you to Dr. Golson and her team, particularly the folks in the Office of General Counsel, Ms. Gail Viens, Ms. Robin Welsh, Ms. Erica White, and Ms. Valerie Irvin. They have been extremely supportive of our committee works, our committee's work. And of course, our dedicated board office staff that have helped with executing the committee, our Board Policy Director, Mr. Brandon Cooper, as well as our Board Assistant for the Committee, Ms. Anise Ellis. As we look forward to the next year, our committee is ready to grow and continue the work that we have done this past year, and we look forward to another year of success. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Board Member Ahmed. Is Dr. Golson, have you returned?
Yes, I have, and I do apologize, I could not control the technical difficulty. Thank you for continuing and then circling back to me. I'm going to continue from where I left off. Last week, the Excellence in Education Foundation for Prince George's County Public Schools hosted its annual Golfing for Education Tournament at Oak Creek Golf Course in Upper Marlboro. The event helps the foundation provide scholarships for graduating seniors. This year, I am proud to share that we will be awarding one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in scholarships to fifty-eight students. So please join me in congratulating our foundation relations officer, Thea Wilson, and the Board of Directors for their amazing work. Don't forget to review the Comprehensive School Boundary Interim Report and share your feedback through our online survey. This fall, we will host community engagement sessions on school boundaries, heater patterns, and program locations. Community input will be used to develop a final plan to present it to the Board of Education. Now that school is out, we are gearing up for our in-person, virtual, and hybrid summer programs for students in pre-kindergarten through grade twelve. Sessions will begin in July with breakfast and lunch provided for students. Visit our summer programs website for more information. Grab and Go breakfast and lunch meal packages will be available Mondays and Wednesdays from ten AM to one PM at sixty-two school sites through our summer food service program. Select Prince George's County Public Schools Memorial Library locations will also offer free lunch to children under the age of eighteen from June twenty-first through August twentieth, Monday through Fridays from one PM to two PM. Please visit our website for school site locations. Lastly, thank you once again to our Student Member of the Board Nina Jackson. I promise to continue to make sure that PGCPS promotes equity, excellence, and empowerment. Have a great and safe, restful summer. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Okay, we're now into public comment on the agenda and non-agenda items. For those members of the public who signed up to provide written or electronic public comments, comments will be posted on board docs for review by board members and the public. We have audio and video recorded comments that can be viewed in board docs as well. Colleagues, we have the following registered live public comment speakers this evening, as I call them. Please note to the public speakers, you have been registered to speak in a public forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be asked to leave the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principals, CEO, deputy superintendent, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly, to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for tonight is Mr. Martin Diggs of ACE AFSCME Local twenty-two fifty, Full Transparency. Mr. Diggs.
Yes, ma'am, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. First, let me say congratulations again to Nina Jackson. Good evening, CEO and the Chair, and also all Board of Education members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I will not be before you long. You know as I stand for approximately six thousand members that are all support professionals of Prince George's County Public School System. I'm not sure why is there, why there's a holdup in hiring the lawyer, but we all understand that that is something that definitely needs to happen. Now, many of us in the county look to all of you as respected leaders in Prince George's County. I'm not sure, but I'm sure that you all can come to some resolve. I do not plan to come and try and call anyone out, but to impress upon you the importance on moving forward with the business that makes us great. Local twenty-two fifty has filed a few appeals, some that need to be looked at by large organizations that affect the security personnel, and also the before and after care employees. Also, there are other appeals that need to be looked at also. Many of these are just sitting in limbo, all of these are just sitting in limbo. Also, these represent or affect parents that also serve our students within Prince George's County. I'm sure you all can agree that this is problematic. However, I want to ensure the CEO, the Local twenty-two fifty, is still willing to work with you and your team and come to a place where we all can agree and ensure our staff and our kids, which we call tomorrow's future, are served with the highest level of professionalism. I do want to thank you for your decision to keep employees and paid during this pandemic and the offer of the additional twenty percent added to summer loss programs. Many of our members are happy with that. So again, I thank you for your time. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Congratulations again once to Nina Jackson, and you all have a safe, wonderful summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Diggs. Teresa Dudley, PGCEA, farewell. Is Miss Dudley on?
Miss Dudley is in. She has to unmute herself.
Miss Dudley?
Thank you. Can you see me?
Yes, see your picture.
You see my picture? I look too cute for y'all to just see a picture.
That's one of your two minute, three minutes.
No, it isn't. I can't see me. I can hear me, but I can't see me. But my camera is on.
We see a picture of you, Teresa.
When you brought me in, there was no opportunity for me to change from a picture on. I'm still shown as being just with audio only.
Miss Berkeley, can you help her with the technology here?
No, ma'am, we're, we're allowing all of our public commenters to, to speak. If we put you in as a panelist, then we won't be, when we remove you from the panel, it'll remove you from the meeting.
That's okay, I gotta go to another meeting.
Okay, all right, let's start at three minutes, Miss Dudley.
So does that mean you're not gonna see me?
We see you, you're beautiful. Please start at three minutes.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Dr. Miller. Um, tonight, I have a lot of mixed emotions. It has been a ride for the past six years. In twenty fifteen, under our former CEO, I took office. My first question was, do you really, what's known, do you really know what's going on in the buildings? Children who are in crisis setting off the buildings with unnec- without the necessary reports that they need, an evaluation system that was so heavily bound that it was no earthly good, it overwhelmed teachers and administrators, causing great tension in the buildings. A school system overcapacity and continued, and development continuing. Morale was low because educators were three steps behind, and ESSA was testing the children to death. Twenty sixteen, Ashante Davis and her daughter Chloe were murdered, and then the Judge Savannah Woods situation. The don't ask, don't tell resulted in hundreds of employees on administrative leave. The first collaboration between PGCPS and PGCEA to address the issues of discipline resulted in the hiring of the first Director of Restorative Practices. We have come a long way. We had two annual one-year contracts, and then we bargained for the common good. Thank you, thank you, Howard Burnett and your negotiations team. Thank you, Dr. Golson, for realizing that we had to do something to put our employees back on their steps. A year, and in this year, we see our great Nina Jackson, graduating and receiving a posse scholarship. Over the past four years, PGCEA's educational foundation delivered approximately thirty thousand dollars in scholarships each year to graduating seniors. This year, we gave away almost thirty-five scholarships for one thousand dollars. We've worked together on community schools and a community schools policy. I've sat on the Community School Steering Committee with my dear friend Pamela Boozer. We have worked together on creating a bullying and harassment policy for the school system. And most importantly, during this pandemic, we have worked together. And I want to applaud Dr. Golson for her efforts in maintaining the, the first semester of teachers staying at home and setting that goal standard, and continuing to work to make our school system safe for our employees. As I leave Prince George's County Public Schools to move to become the Vice President of the Maryland State Educators Association, the issues that we face here in Prince George's County are still on my heart. What do we do about our evaluation system and onboarding our educators? What do we do about our conditional teachers and the teacher shortage? What do we do to make sure that Prince George's County is not an afterthought when it comes to the budget process in an endless? I will be advocating for Prince George's County and for what it is that we do. We have worked to keep our employees and our staff safe. We have worked to do the best that we can. Madam Chair, I'd like, if I could, just finish my last couple of sentences. This is my farewell.
Thank you. Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we've had a distance learning pilot for the evaluation system that we need to really look at. I want to thank all of you. I want to thank Howard. I want to thank Cassandra Lassiter. I want to thank Jay Fawcett and all of the members of the cabinet that have worked so hard to make my job a little bit easier every single day. And working for the ten thousand members of PGCEA will always be in my heart. I will continue to live in Prince George's County and advocate for our schools. And what I would ask in parting is that we put our differences aside about whether our board is elected or whether our board is appointed, and focus on what's going to be right for the children. That we come together and advocate for a county council that will manage residential growth so that our schools are not consistently overcrowded, that we ma- that we maximize the facilities that are available through Maryland National Park and Planning, which is a cash cow. That we work together to make sure that peep, there's capacity building so that people get along in the building. So principals and educators are not going out after each other, so that the bullying and harassment policy doesn't even need to be needed. And the last thing is, Dr. Golson, I just want you to know that being president of PGCEA is one of the hardest things that I have had to do, because in part of my role in being president of PGCEA, I had to do some things that you just did not like. And I understand that. But I want you to know as Teresa, your friend, as of August the first, we will sit down and enjoy each other's company as we have in the past, and we will continue to work together, and anything that I can do to assist Prince George's County Public Schools on the state level, my door is always open, and I appreciate all of the love and attentiveness that all of you are giving to our children. I do want to introduce-
Miss Dudley, your time is up.
Donna Christie.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Donna Christie, Budget and, Budget and SY twenty twenty-two. Dr. Christie.
Thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So, good evening, esteemed members of the school board. I am Dr. Donna Christie, President-elect of PGCEA. As we turn the page and close out school year twenty-one and look forward to school year twenty-two, I think it is important to reflect on this experience and learn as much as we can from it. So, let us not forget how we discovered just how wide the digital divide really is. The digital divide is more than just a lack of access to devices and Wi-Fi, because the lack of access meant that many of our students and their parents did not have the technological skills to maximize the use of that technology even after it was provided to them. In school year twenty-two, let's address this with parent workshops and equity learning labs. Let us not forget how the pandemic has exposed the unhealthy learning environments of a neglected educational infrastructure and invest in the much-needed capital improvements. Let us learn from the students that thrived in this environment. What does it mean that some of our students performed better away from the brick-and-mortar classroom? What was it about the classroom that had been inhibiting their academic performance? And how do we make sure that those barriers are not put back up as students return to the school buildings? For the students that experience mental health problems from the social isolation and are grieving the loss of loved ones, we need to invest in student services and activities that will help them recover and reconnect with healthy social relationships. For our staff that has experienced similar mental health issues, we need to invest in preventative mental health care as a part of our health care benefits package, promote a healthy work-life balance, and incentivize self-care. Now, we also have the blueprint for Maryland's future to implement. So let us use that opportunity given to us by our state legislator, legislature, to reimagine public education and break free from an archaic educational model that has been largely unchanged in the last hundred years. Let's not just talk about equity, but revise policies, such as our grading policy, which rewards students because of their wealth, privilege, environment, or caregiver's education, and punishes students for their poverty, gaps in education, or environment. So in closing, I want to thank all of you for your service to the community, and I look forward to being your labor partner, working with all of you in the interest of our educators, our students, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Christie. Next will be Michelle Clark, Teacher Pay Incentives.
Hello, everybody. It's great to see you again. I'm not lecturing anybody today. Instead, I'm actually talking about our upcoming contract, and I am speaking as an individual, not as a representative of the PGCEA. For the record, this is Michelle Clark. And one of the things I am truly appreciative in the reconciliation of the budget that Dr. Golson has kept to all of the negotiated agreements that are in place with all of the union partners. That is very helpful. I know there were some trying times and a little bit of a budget gap that was caused, even with the whole harmless grant that's going to be forthcoming from the state. But I'd also like to remind you that there are a few things that we can do to help your employees, because as Dr. Christie just mentioned, these were trying times for everybody, and it was a lot of work. I've had people on the street tell me, you like working from home. No, I worked harder at home than I ever had to in front of my students in my classroom. I am not the most technology savvy person in the world, and I was learning at the same time by students were all the time. I would much rather be in front of them and with them and teaching them with hands-on activities in a classroom than being digital all the time. And it was an extremely stressful, personally stressful time for me to be at home and away from that human connection that we all need so much. And I just want to put a reminder in with all of this federal funding that's coming and the ARP and the- put a reminder in with all of this federal funding that's coming and the ARP and the S R funds that one of the purposes that it can be used for is to recruit and retain staff. And as such, we still have a deficit between us and surrounding categories when it comes to the salary scale and what people are making in Prince George's County. We need to attract the best and keep the best here in Prince George's County. We should no longer be a training ground for Montgomery County and other locals who can afford to pay more. I've watched many of my colleagues come and go over the past several years. And I choose to stay. I moved to the county. I'm part of this county. I want to be here and I want to help my students. That's why I'm here. I will tell you, everything you've done to make up for the past wrongs has been fabulous, but we're still making up for two thousand eleven. There's still a matter of two thousand sixteen when we got a two percent COLA and no staff. There are still the inequities between ourselves and surrounding counties. We need to use money to help fill those gaps and keep our workforce in a healthy position to go forward. Thank you very much and have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. The next speaker is Tanya Wing, Ms. Tanya Wingfield, Policy Changes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, I do also want to congratulate our student board member on a job well done academically. Also, on the board, just being an example for everyone to see. I do want to give my appreciation to the Policy Committee. I can see that you're definitely dedicated to trying to update these policies, which we know definitely need to be updated. However, there is still some important information that's still missing. I thank you for putting these items on as a first reader. But we still need to have the CEO's report of the legal ramifications and operational impact of all these changes. That seems to be a common thread that's missing with the policy changes. And a couple of reasons why that is so important. Like with the uniform policy that's being proposed, schools are being asked whether they adopt a voluntary or mandatory policy that they're being asked to take up that slack for students who have financial hardships. So we need to understand how that's going to be paid. Also, with the students who are struggling that want to be able to continue in extracurricular activities. The one thing I didn't see in those changes is actually what exactly what staff is going to be needed if we're going to be targeting deficiencies in performance so that they can continue in this extracurricular activity. Because the evening is already gone, so that means it's something they're going to have to do in the morning. So how's that going to be staffed? So we do need to understand those budget implications. When it comes to the student demonstration, one of the things is, under the definitions, you have the word liability changed to liable, but you keep the definition of liability. So we really need to know what entity is going to really be liable. Since you've changed that, if that's going to be the change. And then the policy changes. You know, considering the OMBC violation, opinion that you violated the Opens Meeting Act, moving forward on adding a position like the Policy Director in that policy, I think that that's something you should look at with caution. Because, you know, now that the violation has been announced, those activities can be reversed through a challenge, and there is a challenge pending. So I would just ask that the committee go back and get this information. It's on a first reader. Before it moves to a second reader coming into the new year, we need to have the CEO's report on the legal ramification and the operation impact so that the public can make a intelligent or give intelligent responses as to whether these changes are good for our system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. That concludes our registered speaker comments. Were there any other, Ms. Berkeley? Thank you. Okay, we will, as indicated at the beginning of the meeting, four-point-oh consent agenda in reference to a proclamation has been removed from the agenda. And we will move into five-point-oh, the Budget Consent Agenda. Dr. Golson, please introduce items five-point-one through five-point-eleven.
Point of order, Madam Chair, could we pull five-point-seven for a separate vote in discussion?
Five-point-seven?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, Dr. Golson, would you start with five-point-one through five-point-six?
And Madam Chair, can you pull item five-eleven to be discussed separately as well?
Okay, and five-seven. Thank you. Dr. Golson, would you begin with five-point, go through five-point-one and five-point-six, please?
No problem. Items five-point-one through five-point-six requires board approval of Baden Elementary School, UNIVENT, and Fan Call Replacement Final Payment and Acceptance. Recommendation of Award for the Provision of Mental Health Services for Elementary and Secondary Schools. Recommendation for Award for Instructional Services for Eligible Title-I Students. July two thousand twenty-one expenditure requirements. August two thousand twenty-one expenditure requirements and fiscal year two thousand twenty-two facility usage fees.
Are there any questions of Dr. Golson in reference to items five-point-one to five-point-six?
Make a motion, Madam Chair, just a point of order. We need to make a motion on those items, one, five-point-one through five-point-six. And I move that we accept the recommendation of the CEO.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept the recommendations of the CEO for items five-point-one, five-point-two, five-point-three, five-point-four, five-point-five, and five-point-six. All in favor?
Queen, her hand up.
I apologize, Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair, for recognizing. Thank you, Mr. Bells, for saying it. I have a question to Dr. Golson for the facility use. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
So this is item five-point-six. We annually charge for organizations to use our facilities. We have not put an increase in because of last year we were under COVID. We plan to reopen. But this increase is just to cover the cost of the increase and pay for our custodial staff so that we break even when our facilities are being used by profit organizations. There is a different fee for nonprofit versus profit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that our nonprofit organizations, our local community, HOAs and civic associations that don't make profits will still be able to use the facilities.
They still can, and they're under a different provision. And for our HOAs, we don't charge them for those civic associations to use it if they're under a certain number of people, which is typically under fifty people who are using a facility.
Thank you so very much.
Any other discussion? We have moved in second to accept the recommendations of the CEO. All in favor? Oh, five-point-one through five-point-six. All in favor? Opposition? Any abstentions? The motion carries. All right, Dr. Golson, would you present five-point-seven?
Item five-point-seven is the item that I think Board Member Ahmed had questions on.
Yes.
Item five-point-seven requires board approval for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two non-resident tuition rates.
Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Colleagues, I wanted to explain my vote here. I'm not going to be voting in favor of increasing the non-resident tuition rates. Basically, as I'm reading it, it is the situation that we're charging some students to attend PG CPS. And it's my belief that we should not be charging any student to go to school in our school system. I know that there are waivers for this, but if a student wants to attend PG CPS, I feel like they should be able to enroll in a school that has available transfer seats. Establishing a cost to education only disadvantages folks that may already be marginalized, like emancipated youth and undocumented minors, and I'm not for that. And so, if I've done the math right, we're talking about non-resident students being anywhere from twenty-six to one hundred and sixty students that could be affected by this. And I think that voting no here doesn't necessarily remove the rates entirely, but it's my understanding that it'll stop an increase of the rates in time for us to be able to review the applicable policies and laws to see if anything more can be done around the issue. But that's why I'm going to be voting no on this particular item.
I do want to just make sure that everyone is aware that the rates are for students who do not live in Prince George's County. So they may reside in DC and have decided to come to Prince George's County. We don't get a per pupil expenditure for any of those students who are outside of Prince George's County. And therefore, we end up having to absorb the cost for those two. So you're correct. We shouldn't be providing those services to our residents, but these are for people who are not our residents.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. I'll reiterate, there are folks that are undocumented minors that maybe not be able to prove residency. I still believe that we should not be charging, there should not be a cost to education. And it's also coming from an environment, a culture where there are tuition costs for education, for a good education. And this is coming from my cultural perspective. I just don't think that we should be charging students to be educated in our schools.
No problem. I just don't want our community to believe that we're turning away undocumented youth, if they are. If they're undocumented youth and we can, and they're willing to share where they are residing, we do, we're able to bring them in and not charge them.
Thank you. A Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much. I just wanted to clarify a little bit of that also. As Dr. Golson has said, as a parent who have raised eleven foster kids, six of my kids were from the District of Columbia. Although they were foster kids through DC until I became guardianship of them, DC was responsible for paying for these kids' education in Maryland, and as they should be, because they were under the DC system. They were getting money for the DC. So it is reasons why that charge is there, and I have learned that because of that. But once I got guardianship of them and they lived in my residence, then they were no longer charged. So I do understand your concern, Ms. Ahmed, for some. But in all honesty, when you have places like DC and Montgomery County and even anywhere else who may have fostered other kids and they have them with parents who live in Prince George's County, and they're getting paid a lot of money for their state, for these children, and they're going to schools in our area, then they do need to pay. Because we have to pay the same if our kids go to their school. If we place a Prince George's County student in DC, trust and believe, they're going to want to be paid also. I just wanted to add that on to.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Any further discussion? May I have a motion to approve item five-point-seven?
Don't move.
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept the recommendation of the CEO for the non-resident tuition rates. All in favor?
No.
One opposition? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Now we will move to items five-point-eight through five-point-ten. Dr. Golson.
Thank you. Item five-point-eight through five-point-ten requires board approval. Five-point-eight is ratification of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through fiscal year two thousand twenty-four compensation improvements and contractual amendments for employees represented by the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel, Unit Two and Unit Three. Five-point-nine is ratification of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through fiscal year two thousand twenty-four compensation improvements and contractual agreements for employees represented by Service Employees International Union Local 400 Prince George's County CTW CLC, which is the SEIU Local 400. And item five-ten is executive level and Board of Education Office Personnel Compensation Changes in accordance with the approved negotiated settlements by the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel for Unit Three.
Thank you. Any questions?
I move to recommend the CEO's, I move to accept the CEO's recommendation for five-point-eight through five-ten.
No discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention, Chris Valentine.
Thank you. One abstention to be noted. The eyes have it, the recommendation is approved by the board. And the motion carries. Now we'll move to five-point-eleven, Reconciliation and Adoption of the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Two Annual Operating Budget. Dr. Golson.
Thank you. I wanted to give our public a brief overview before we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two annual operating budget. In December, projecting major state and county unrestricted revenue losses, I proposed a budget that took unprecedented steps to close a one-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar budget deficit while providing the resources that all of our students deserve and addressing our achievement gaps. In February, the Board of Education passed its requested budget, which added critical focused initiatives. As we have received our final state and county allocations over the last month, we were left with an additional forty-six million dollars unrestricted budget deficit. On June tenth, I presented my recommendation for reconciling the deficit to the Board of Education. The Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, led by Board Member Murray, during the June fifteenth meeting, accepted the recommendation with no amendments. Developing a budget of this size, scope, and complexity is a whole community effort, and this is a final budget that the entire community can be proud of. This budget comprehensively addresses learning loss for all students, expands mental health supports to all students over the next three years, provides valuable technology in and outside of the classroom while closing the digital divide, allows for improved sanitation and airflow in our facilities, and fully funds the negotiated agreements with all of our labor partners as we improve the regional competitiveness of our salary benefit packages. This is a budget that strategically uses short-time revenue from federal COVID-nineteen relief to bridge the gap with a later onset curve in funding increases in order to sustainably provide quality education and whole child supports to all of our students. Tonight, you all will vote on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two final operating budget. On behalf of my entire administration, I want to thank the Board of Education, the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, their leadership and their staff for all of their work. This board and committee have collaborated with the administration throughout all three iterations of this budget, and the final product was vastly improved by their input. I would also like to thank our county and state partners, all of our local partners, all of our labor partners, our principals and our school administrators, all of our chiefs, directors, managers, and department staff that have worked diligently on this budget, and all of the students, parents, employees, and other community members that have advocated and achieved change through their voice. I have also liked to thank our Budget Director Lisa Howe, our Grant Financial Manager, Supervisor Darryl Haley, Haley, and their teams for their tireless work in finalizing the budget that the Board of Education will vote on tonight. Finally, I'd like to provide Lisa Howe just a quick moment and opportunity to thank her team members as well. Lisa's gone, so can you please thank your team members?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Golson. This has definitely been a challenging year for sure, and I'm very proud of the work that we were able to accomplish, completing the majority of the budget virtually. The team didn't miss a beat in getting our deadlines done and making it through this budget cycle. I'd like to personally thank the supervisors, Foma Smith, Darlene Bond, and Dana Eastep. The analyst, Jean Overton, Jaclyn Warner-Wiggins, Lockwin, Michelle Crowley, Caduce Orio, Chris Jones, and Felicia Hyatt. Our Fiscal Compliance Officer, Kristy Miller, who plays a critical role in the development of our school-based budgets. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Karen Thorne, who graciously agreed to come out of retirement to help us with the heavy lift of producing our budget books and managing the budget cycle Q and A process with the Board and County. Thank you, team. Appreciate everyone's hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. And now we present to you item five point one-one, which is the reconciliation and adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two annual operating budget.
Um, so I make the motion that we accept that budget?
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the reconciliation and adoption of the FY twenty-twenty-two annual operating budget. May I have uh any discussion? Uh, Board Member Queen, I think I, your hand was up first.
Thank you so very much. I just want to ditto our CEO, all her comments, and thanking everybody. And again, Ms. Howe, ditto her comments and thanking everyone. Um, again, thank um the Chair of the Budget Committee, Mr. Murray, and our past Chair, Ms. Williams, who started off the Budget Committee. Um, as I work on the vice chair for both of them, it has been an awesome year to serve on the both of you. Actually, it's been an awesome year since I've been on the board to work on the ABFA committee. As as stated by Dr. Golson and Ms. Howe, this was definitely a hard year for many. Um, um, definitely want to thank Mr. Herman Smith for being at the meetings with us, and I know sometime he was thinking these people are just crazy for the things we want. But you were very patient, and you found ways, and you answered all of my questions and our questions, and I just want to let you know I truly appreciate you, even since you've been here, sir, I appreciate your service and all you have done for the board. And I want to say to my colleagues, I appreciate each and every one of you. This has been a trying and an awesome year for all of us, even through our ups and downs and our problems and all, we got this budget done. Um, it was stated already, we thank the county executive, we thank the county council, and all of our state legislators who legislate to get the money needed, and everyone who has done most. But most of all, I just want to thank you guys. So not adding any more at that last minute, I know there's a lot of things that a lot of you have, who want to do, you have some great ideas. You are some talented board members, and I'm proud to serve with you, each and every one of you. But I'm just glad to know that you knew when to hold them and when to fold them. So thank you guys so very much for passing this awesome budget.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Board Member Murray was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Dr. Golson, could you talk a bit about how this budget um is going to speak to supporting um our students in reading, particularly um in grades K through three? For example, when I look at um the last administration of Park um in two thousand nineteen, only twenty-seven percent of our students um were proficient, were advanced in reading. Can you talk about what you expect to be different um based on the the budgeting um and the budget that we have before us, please?
As we shared in several of our presentations, not only do we anticipate um the use of our own current budget, but we're all, we're also going to utilize funds from S R one, two, and Kerwin that helped to begin to close the gap, not just for students in reading English language arts for K to three, but for all students. And so while this pand- pandemic has highlighted for us that there are areas that we have to close, mainly in mathematics, we do realize that we must continue to also begin to use the strategies we've implemented that your work group has started to hear from our staff that works around reading English language arts. So we'll continue to use those strategies. We'll use the funds as we outlined in those ABFA committee meetings um from S R one and two. Um, we have not gotten S R three directions yet. Um, I will send to the board a memo related to S R three that we just recently received. Um, we will can, now that we are back in full person, we'll utilize our whole group, small group, our reading strategies that we've implemented through our um instruction and our supervisor programs. We'll continue to make sure that our staffs are trained on our revised curriculum. We'll utilize our bridging documents that we created this past summer. We will do new bridging documents um that will help us to open for this fall. And we will continue to monitor the delivery of instruction through our benchmark assessments, which help to inform instruction based on our student progress.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. And it's just one follow-up. Um, could you speak to, I guess, the the quantity or breadth of the tutoring programs that you expect to be offered um in the coming school year? You know, the the need um is great. You know, I hear from parents in the community the need for tutoring for their students, particularly in this early grades and reading. And um I know that we have some, but it doesn't seem to meet, you know, the demand that we know is there. Um, and so I would just like to hear a little more about that in terms of the number of students that we expect to be served um in small group and one-to-one tutoring at those early critical grades.
I don't have those exact numbers off the top of my head, but we have provided, and it is posted on our website, our quarterly um assessment report for Kerwin that addresses our tutoring. I also provided that information to all of our board members through our weekly update. So we provide after-school tutoring. Um, we did it virtually. We will plan to continue to do that virtually in the fall and the spring, as well as um as this budget has highlighted, in-person tutoring for those Bridge to Excellence sites that we will also support. In addition, we implemented our book program, which really helped um to do one-on-one reading with students, and we found that um at our students at our earlier grades, that we're able to continue to sustain their reading level and not lose in their reading level through book note. We're continuing to offer that this summer, um and we have increased the number of community members who will do help and assist in that one-to-one. As part of Kerwin legislation, there is also additional funding that we'll be utilizing in the fall that ensures that tutoring is provided for no, in groups no greater than four students. That can be done virtually and in person, and we will utilize those skills as well. And if our board members need me to re-stend the report that I provided to you all, I want to say in January, as it relates to the very specific numbers, I can, and I can provide the link to the public as well on where they can find that report um in our blueprint for schools under community schools. Um, we do a comprehensive report, and it gives you the total number of participants that have utilized our after-school tutorial services.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Adam Stafford, I saw your ha- I see your hand, but this uh Board Member Boozer Struther is next, and you'll come after her.
Uh, thank you, uh Chair Miller. I I had hoped to follow uh Board Member Queen because our remarks were quite similar about that today is really a celebration of our our unity, our work with our our funders, our county council, our our uh state legislatures, and and the incredible leadership of Dr. Goldson. This budgeting team that we have with Mr. Herbstrom, and just and your entire staff, Ms. Howell, and everyone you mentioned, um I just want to express my gratitude. As a board member, um the the consistency over these last few years that we have been listening to our parents, our students, our staff, and delivering, we see this in the dollars, we see it in and very much the, what I would say, the respect that we are giving to our our school system and our students uh through these choices we are making. And and I'm just feeling that this is a very proud moment for us. And I and I have to say to the news media who came at Fox Five and Channel Nine, who thought it was important to come two hours ago, this is when you should have been here. So tomorrow, when the news, when these news reports are out, this is the moment I hope that the public will remember from this evening. And I just wanted to say that that these are the moments for this board where we should be embracing and celebrating. And I want to just thank all all of my colleagues who did work so hard on this and who have been driving a consensus uh towards focusing on our children uh for this moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Struther. Uh, Board Member Adam Stafford?
Yes, I also wanted to just thank Dr. Goldson for uh really working specifically on the Bridge to Excellence Schools amendment, and my colleagues that also co-sponsored that. Um, I think that that is really going to support so many students. And I know at our last meeting, you talked a bit about uh possi- the possibility of using that funding for extended learning opportunities. And I was wondering if you could just share a little bit more. I have the presentation here, but maybe if you could just share a bit more about how um that you anticipate that will impact student learning.
Yes, as just previously shared um with um for Board Member Murray, um in those schools that have been identified for Bridge to Excellence sites, we will provide additional tutorial support um in those academic areas where our students have been identified as having gaps and providing that instruction in small groups so that we're able to meet the needs of our students. Transportation will be provided so that parents will not be inconvenienced and have to pick those students up. Um, they will remain after school. They'll be there two days a week. Um, they'll get that additional support. We will have to do pre and post tests to monitor our student progress, provide that um additional layer if they need um in the areas that they still need the additional gap for academic loss, and then reassess um as we move through the program. But that will be offered to all of our Bridge to Excellence schools.
Thank you so much, and thank you to your team.
Board Member Valentine?
Dr. Golson, you know, I want to thank you so much. This has been a a long and hard-won year for our entire system, for our students, for educators, for our parents, and and for your staff. And you and I have communicated throughout this time. Um, I just want to thank you. Thank you, Lisa Howe, um Michael, Herbs, Herbs, um and and everyone else. Uh, I want to thank the board, my colleagues, uh members of the Budget Committee, but everyone who contributed to ensuring uh that the taxpayer dollars um that uh we generate uh go to where they need to go. This is, you know, one of the two most important functions of this body um and one that we take seriously. And so uh each of us, you know, we're a very large board. We each have our individual passion, but we have a collective goal and vision for the future of our district. Um, and so this is something um that we take seriously. Um, and I definitely appreciate all the members who contribute to this. I do have one question, uh Dr. Golson. Um, and particularly as it relates to uh one of the, you know, key strategic um um goals of of this uh this school district. Uh, just for those who are wondering, how will this budget uh ensure that our district um recruits and retains competent, culturally responsive um diverse workforce uh moving forward?
As we shared in our recruitment guide that was published January of two thousand twenty-one, we will continue to focus on finding staff that meets the needs of the students that they serve, which means an increase in the number of Latinx educators as well, not only just in the classroom, but also in administrative positions, as well as um men that also represent the students that we serve. It's key that our students see the same people that look just like them. And so our recruitment plan, as we shared in January, really elaborates on how we will continue to do that, as well as the support of the board um in last year's budget of finding ways to make sure that all of our teachers become certified in the required timeframe, which also allows us to retain our workforce. Um, the increased number of nationally certified, nationally board-certified teachers helps us to retain teachers, but also makes it as a great recruitment tool um to increase and encourage others to join the PGCPS professional family. So please, once again, um not to belabor, but once again, that's a report that was shared, and it's in, it's in detail, over a hundred pages worth of our plans of how we continue to do that. I'll be glad to send that information out again, and it's also published on our website as well.
And and thank you for those who are one. I just want to reiterate uh that uh the last I checked, uh Prince George's County had the highest percentage of male educators of color in the DC metro area. And so I just want to say thank you to your staff, to your recruitment um team, um and to all the edu- all the school leaders who work tirelessly to ensure that we retain um endeavors uh workforce and that we remain um leaders uh in the DMV and how we ensure that our students um have educators who uh represent them um and are in line with their cultural uh backgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Valentine. Any more discussion? Then we will move for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose?
No.
One no. That was just the Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Okay. Any abstentions? The eyes have it, and uh the motion carries. So but the reconciliation and adoption of the FY twenty-twenty-two annual operating budget has been approved by this board. Next, we will move into governance of five point this should be six, governance, second reader, unfinished business. Uh, colleagues, please call your attention to item five point one, Board of Education meeting calendar for your approval and consideration.
The six point one?
Well, I thought, okay. Six point oh, so this is seven. Thank you.
I'm going to accept the Board of Education meeting calendar, item six point one.
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept the Board of Education calendar for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty. This is twenty-twenty-one. It should be twenty-one, twenty-two. Am I correct? Yes.
Yes, it should be.
Twenty twenty, should be twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, yes, that is correct.
Okay, we have moved in second. Is there any discussion? Board Member Ahmed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, uh in order to comply with the policy infractions noted in the board action summary, I want to put a substitute motion on the floor for the board to approve the meeting calendar with the following amendments. Uh, and these are the amendments: removing the summer six-week board break for July twenty-twenty-one, adding five PM executive sessions and seven PM board meetings on July fifteenth, July twenty-ninth, December ninth, and May twenty-sixth, and adding a five PM board budget work session and seven PM public hearing on January twenty-seven. Now, that's my substitute motion.
Is there a second for the uh substitute motion?
A second.
It has been moved in second. Um, okay, what's the problematic procedure? We had a motion, a motion on the floor, and this is a substitute. So.
Discussion on the motion, correct, and then the vote on the motion.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, those in favor of removing the six weeks?
Well, sorry, Madam Chair. I think right now a discussion on um Board Member Ahmed's motion, which will it's a med, correct me if I'm wrong, will be voted on separately uh to add it and amend it. So right now, I think we're in the, we're in discussion on Board Member.
On the, on her, okay, her recommendation. Yeah.
Yeah.
Board Member Ahmed?
Yes, this is the substitute motion that includes in approving the Board of Education meeting calendar with the amendments that I had mentioned. Um, they're similar to the amendments that I brought before the board uh last time around, and they were also, I believe, sent via email to many of y'all uh in preparation for today.
Any discussion?
We have two hands.
Keep those dates, please, for the for the record, please.
Say that again.
You should repeat the dates.
It was to remove, oh, Ahmed, would you repeat?
States. Five PM executive sessions and seven PM board meetings on July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, December ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, and adding a five PM board budget work session and seven PM public hearing on January twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, there's, this part of this is also removing the summer six-week board break for July twenty-twenty-one. Thank you.
Discussion, Board Member uh Struther. Boozer Struther?
Yeah, thank you so much. I I will not be supporting this amendment. I think that our um certainly in the board handbook, the way it's written, uh we do typically take off July, and I think the six-week break is critical for our uh particularly Dr. Goldson and and her team who do so much work for our board meetings, our staff, that they've been going fifteen months straight, and and out of respect for the system, we need a break um across the board, and um it's not just about us meeting. I I have already heard it ear- it earlier this evening that Dr. Miller anticipated she may need to call us back together for specific items, but um for regular uh meetings, I I support the summer break so that the staff can focus on planning for the new year, and I will not be voting in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Queen?
Yes, I think I am asked this question once before, and I'll state it again, that I believe when we have our ABFA committee meetings, they're considered meetings, which will be the extra meetings that are needed to make sure we're meeting meetings. I know we normally have them in January, I think another one in February, and then and may, the other one may be in March. So them has taken updates to these meetings. I I believe, and I understand why Ms. Ahmed is trying to do it, as she stated, she did send it to everyone. But I just think we're kind of like over over-meeting a little bit with everyone, and I, just like Ms. Boozer struggled, just said, I think people need a break. Um, not just, I mean, in all reality, all the things that have been going on this board, I don't have to say it, you all need a COVID mental health break because I think you need to come back fresh, in all honesty, you know? Um, and then maybe we could really get some work done. So for us to constantly keep meeting and meeting, and I'm here, Dr. Miller, saying that we have things to do over the summer, but for for real, you need a mental health break. The same thing I say about our students and our parents, our community and our teacher, socially, emotionally, everybody is going through some things, and I can see so- Socially, emotionally, everybody is going through some things, and I can see socially, emotionally, that people on this board are also going through some things too. So we really may want to really think about, at this point in time, do we want to add more social emotional stress on everyone at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Board Member Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I think at this point, I don't have too much stake in the, our, the six-week break. However, I did have, I guess, two points or question in commentary. So alluding to Ms. Ahmed's words about just trying to adhere to the policies that we currently have established, one of the excerpts that cited in the Board Action Summary is that the board would meet in July to determine committee assignments. So I guess for, I guess whoever may have an answer or response, like regarding implications, if the board doesn't have, or I guess doesn't decide or agree to suspend the six-week break, what happens regarding that specific clause as far as committee assignments? And, you know, how we decide to suspend what committee? And then to Ms. Ahmed specifically, of course, you know, considering your work on the Policy and Governance Committee, what would be, I guess, your opinion regarding what this means as far as these specific cited policies go? If we decide as a board to not forego the six-week break? Do you foresee that we would have to make, that we should make amendments to these policies just to stay consistent? And to make sure we're following policy? Or what would your advice or counsel be?
Thank you, Board Member Jackson. My thought is that if we don't want this to continue in the future, then we should address it and make the policy change in committee through next year. These, these policies that are referenced, the eight thousand series, nine thousand series are already in the work plan for the committee for the coming year. So in my head, what makes sense is apply the policy and then change the policy throughout the course of next year so that we're not in the situation next year. But that's, that's my two cents. I, I don't know if the Board Policy Director has a more clear response I can give him.
Board Member Burrows?
I just want to, thank you, Ms. Jackson, and I just wanted to clarify. Ms. Ahmed, the current calendar that we're scheduled to vote on, is it or is it not in compliance with board policy?
It is not in compliance with board policy.
And are your amendments putting it in compliance with board policy?
That is my understanding. With the two board policies that were referenced, yes, it would bring it in compliance.
Okay, well, I'm going to vote to support your amendments to be in compliance with board policy. Thank you.
Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thank you so much. You know, I don't see these policies listed this week. I would have to go back. But I believe there's a phrase in there that would allow circumstances. So I, I, they're not posted, so I'll go back to the next meeting and look. But also, this board handbook that's been published for years says the board typically conducts two meetings per month, except for the month of July, during which the board is in recess, August and November. So there's been inconsistency for years. This board has accepted the six-week break for years, except for this year, for some reason. So I would offer that this is something that we can take care of as we resume in August and with fut, in future committee meetings. Because this, this, it's not, I've been, this be my third, and I have not heard concerns about this. So I just wanted to make a point of that this handbook has not been referenced, and it clearly states, except for the month of July with the recess.
Thank you, Board Member. Well, we will take a vote on the amendment, this Ahmed's amendment to the calendar. All in favor of the amendment which adds, which takes away the six weeks, adds dates in July and January as stated. All in favor?
We would call a roll on this one, I'm sure.
Okay, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed? All right, Mrs. Ahmed, I couldn't hear you.
Aye, thank you.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
No.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Abstain.
Mr. Montero?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Can you come back to me on that, please?
Sure. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Uh, no.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Dr. Miller?
No.
Mrs. Queen?
I'm going to abstain.
Motion doesn't carry. It needs seven votes. Back to the original item six point one, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Board of Education Meeting Calendar for your approval. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to roll call on this one too. It's already been moved incorrectly correctly. So, I mean, right now, we are in, call the question.
All in favor? Oh, call the role, Miss Berkeley.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
No.
Mrs. Ahmed?
No.
Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Say.
Mr. Harris?
Staying.
Ms. Jackson?
Abstain.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Abstain.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, motion fails. So we will use the same calendar that we've been using since we can't get an agreement on either calendar. So the calendar will be.
Dr. Miller, I don't think we can, we just voted, we did not vote to approve the calendar. So I think we just don't have one. We might just have to go back to the wrong board consensus. But I, I just want to, on the record, the, the calendar did not move forward, and we did not approve the calendar.
But I said that, that the.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're.
I said we don't have a calendar.
Okay, thank you.
And as it stands, we would operate under the current calendar or process, since we have not.
Yes. Well, we cannot move forward with the calendar. I, I think if the current calendar ends by the end of summer, maybe. But we cannot move forward with, we did not approve a calendar for the coming year. So we can't go off of a past practice if it hasn't been approved.
So then, what are your suggestions? Because we don't.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. On June thirty, this calendar will end on June thirty.
Correct.
And so we do not have a calendar to operate on until we come up with one for the next fiscal year. And so we will table this matter and then come back to it. We have to figure that out. If we had a parliamentarian, we would be able to move forward on something. But since we don't, we, we will continue to operate this current calendar, which ends June thirty.
Board Member Queen?
Madam Chair, can I make another motion that we actually accept the calendars, but accept the dates, all the dates that Ms. Ahmed read, accepts the date in July? If I can get the ones that are in July, which give people a break in the month of July, if I can get a second on that, that may help approve the calendar. Nobody wants?
Can I make a friendly amendment to that? Can I make an amendment that we have a compromise? Because this, the, the, the dates that are proposed also require us to meet in January, and we know that it's important for us to also meet in January. Could we have one meeting in July? Because as the chair has stated earlier this evening, there will be some need for us to come back to the table in July potentially. And so let's put one meeting on the calendar for this summer. I'm willing to make that compromise.
That's fine. I'll accept that.
I, as a seconder to that, I can accept that, because I know that I have lots of travel in July that's scheduled. If we put it in August, then I think we can do early August, if that's okay with the amender.
What, Board Member Burrows?
The, well, was that to the amender?
I didn't understand you.
I was asking the amender if we could make it for early August instead of July. Because I, I have travel, I know other board members have traveled in, in July. It may be hard for us to get a date, but in August, it's much better. So if she's okay with that.
The only reason I don't say August is because, remember, we're supposed to be having our board retreat in August, and that's going to be very important for us to have. So, well, those are the, I see some folks shaking their head, but these are the dates that are possibly being flowed with early August, because we also are waiting for someone to be appointed. So, I mean, we're going to have to meet this summer. This is, I think this is, we're going to have to meet for a board retreat. But Dr. Miller has said we're going to have to meet for other items as well. So if we can come together to a consensus to say one meeting in July and possibly a retreat in August, I think that's a fair compromise, and we, of course, we do need to meet in January.
Board Member Adam Stafford, the retreat may have to be moved to the fall because of the way things are going and the business of the board that needs to take place. And at this point in time, I cannot put the retreat as a priority until we get other issues with this board straightened out. So.
Just to reply to that, respectfully speaking, I think that needs to be our number one priority so that we can work together in a functional way. I think that we need to meet sooner rather than later, so we can get to know one another and work together so that we can be more united and, and working together in the fall.
Your point is well taken. Board Member Queen? Well, I saw.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just want to remind everybody that the chair still has the right to call me and schedule meetings. So if we need a special meeting, she still have that right. She's already shown that. So I just want to remind you guys that. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Madam.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Board Member Thomas?
Yeah, thank you for recognizing me. I, I do want to note a few things. I think just first in response to what Ms. Queen just stated, I want to say for the public that, you know, there are provisions that allow for the, the board chair to call a meeting at any time. And so my colleague, Ms. Queen, is correct on that. There are also provisions that allow for five members of the board to call meetings at any time. And, and they are special meetings or can be emergency meetings. And what I want the public to know and be aware of is the reason why we're in this position right now, where we can't agree on what our com, a coming calendar is, is because there is currently a, a lack of respect from the board chair towards, and, and, and towards others, from others on the board, towards board members when they do decide that they want to call special meetings or ask for the chair to put certain items on the agenda. And so this is why we're at this current impasse right now. I want, I want the public to just be clear about that. And so if those, if those special meetings that had been requested could have been honored in the past, I don't think we would be in this situation. But time and time again, we've seen a chair who overrules the will of the board, what, what the members of the board, when it comes to adding certain agenda items. And so now here we find ourselves, you know, in a position where we still have a desire for more meetings during the summer. I also just want to add to my colleague, Ms. Williams, I totally understand having a, a busy calendar, a scheduled calendar. You, you and I know, we, we have talked about our travel that has involved, and I just want to note, you know, I do have lots of travel in my schedule as well, but when board meetings are scheduled, I do everything I can to make it. I will note for the public, I don't mind sharing, I'm on camera off right now, but I am traveling right now. When a meeting is scheduled, you find a way to be present, because this is part of the role that we serve to serve the public. And so just to be very, very clear, I think if, if board members felt confidence in board leadership to be able to put items on the agenda that board members want to be seen and want to discuss and vote upon, then that, then we wouldn't be at this current issue. But right now, this is where we are, and so that's what's causing this impact, impasse. I want the public to just be really clear and aware of that, to, to, to just spell the issue out. And, and I want to just also second the comments from Board Member Adam Stafford, that a board retreat is absolutely imperative. And any, any notion that we, we should expect to go another two months without resolving some of the tension that exists on this board is a total mistake, and it's, it's, it is, in, in my opinion, a not, just not a good decision that a good leader would make. That's all I have to share. Thanks for allowing me to make these comments.
Board Member Jackson, I saw your hand first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll preface by saying that I'll continue to abstain on this matter just because I find that to be the only right course of action, considering that this board calendar won't have any impact on me. However, I think two points worth mentioning is that in regards to busy schedules and things of that nature, I think one of the silver linings out of this past four years, virtual accessibility. The phone, with a computer, with somewhat decent Wi-Fi, you can have a sort of presence here on the board meeting with the board, if that's the course or the medium that the board decides to use for board meetings moving forward. I'm second to that. Some of the themes, or one of the themes that board members have uplifted as of late is this wanting to adhere to policy and adhere to procedures. Well, taking Ms. Ahmed's, what she mentioned regarding her amendments at, you know, at face value, she said she was doing this in an effort to make sure that we adhere to policy. I know there were some mentions of, you know, well, we've done this in the past, why, why do we have to do it now? And I understand that, but it's never too late to correct the course of action. And if we're committed to following policy, it's never too late to make the changes necessary to make sure that we're following policy, if that's the will of the board and the will of board members. And so that's my two cents.
Thank you, Board Member Jackson. Board Member Burrows?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. It's clear to me that this item will not receive eight votes tonight. And so I would recommend, if Ms. Ahmed could work with, maybe Ms. Boozer Struthers or some sort of compromise committee to bring back a calendar, calendar that will achieve the requisite amount of votes passed before June thirtieth, is the recommendation that I would like to make. Because it's very clear to me that no calendar in this meeting will achieve the number of votes necessary to pass. So instead of laboring the point, if I can be of any assistance in helping with the compromise, I'm willing to. But I just think we need to move on and allow colleagues to work together collaboratively between now and June thirtieth to have a compromise proposal. This is my recommendation.
Thank you. Board Member Murray, you were next.
Thank you. Dr. Murray, will the meetings on this calendar be in person or will they be virtual?
They can still be virtual.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking in relation, you know, to the fact that, you know, the board voted to send teachers and students back in person quite a long time ago. So we're just, we're just asking to, to highlight that, you know, apparent discrepancy in my mind. Thank you.
Well, let me give clarification to that. I need, oh, well, not I, the board needs to receive clarification in terms of the public being able to come to the in-person meetings. It is, it is not clear how that will be handled in terms of the public being able to come into the, I mean, into the auditorium for those meetings. So with that being said, why are we meeting in an auditorium, looking at our screens when we can do just as we're doing now virtually? So until I get some, the chair receives information relative to the accessibility of the public to our meetings, we will continue in virtual. Unless, Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Thank you so much. Again, I will say I support the existing calendar, and I see, I, I see no need to spend time compromising on this. The chair can call meetings, and as a member, if the chair calls any special meetings, I will attend. But I stand by this calendar and my vote for the current calendar.
Thank you. Thank you. Board Member Thomas.
Yeah, um, thank you, Ms. Boozer Struther for those remarks. Um, so if, yeah, I, I hear you when you say that if a chair calls a special meeting, you'll um, uh, uh, arrange your, um, calendar to attend. So if, um, you know, you and um, several, five other board mi- board members as policy states were to call a meeting, would you also plan to attend that? Just want to make sure that that, um, that same, um, rule would be applied in that case.
Board Member Burrows.
That was a question for, um, my colleague.
I choose that.
Of course she is. Okay, thank you.
Board Member Burrows.
Yes, I, I gave, um, this is in response to Board Member Boozer Struthers. While I understand that you are content with this calendar, the reality is, is that no calendar can receive a votes. And so we can dig in our heels and not have a calendar, or we can work together in a collaborative fashion to produce a document that will get the co- will get the legal amount of votes required in order for it to pass. And that's all I'm saying. It's clear that no calendar is going to get a votes. So I can be firm in my position and not compromise. You can be firm in your position and not compromise. But what does that get us at the end of the day? We're gonna have to give and take like legislative bodies do. And I'm confident that we can, um, be adult enough to do that.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes, uh, Board Member Ba- uh, Valentine.
Um, I'm, I'm volunteering to work with Board Member Ahmed on coming up with, uh, a compromised, um, calendar. Um, and I would imagine we have to come back to this body, uh, prior to July first, uh, Board Member Ahmed in order to approve that calendar. I just want to make sure you and I be under the same understanding that this is an agreement that we're going to work this out.
We can most, I'm most definitely willing to work with you, Mr. Valentine, on the calendar. I don't know what the requirement is by when we would need to approve it, or that might be a better question suited to be answered by our policy director.
Yeah, I guess my question would be if the current one, um, uh, is only good until the end of this month, that every day in July that we don't have a calendar, that we've not voted on one, we're operating outside of a calendar, uh, but I'll stop.
Board Member Thomas.
Yeah, I just want to, um, second, um, the remarks from Mr. Burrows. I think we obviously, um, are in a disagreement here, but we, we will have to just work together and uh, come up with a compromise that will satisfy all board members. So I do, do want to just, um, offer out there, um, to Ms. Ahmed, Mr. Valentine, uh, that I'm willing to come to the table and work on this, um, collaboratively as well, because I think that's the only way we can, um, make progress. Thanks.
May I have a motion to table this item until? So this item is tabled and when the committee meets, uh, the task force or that particular task force meets and comes up with, um, a compromise that may be acceptable to the, uh, um, board in general. Um, the total board members, uh, then I will schedule a special meeting.
Uh, Dr. Miller, who was the maker of that motion?
Of which one to table it?
Yes, ma'am.
I made, I'm, I, I, I asked that it be, uh, for a motion and somebody said, "I." I don't know who it was.
I said, "So moved."
And I second you. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of tabling this?
Madam Chair, I have my hand raised.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes, um, uh, can I offer a friendly amendment to, um, for Member Adam Stafford? Um, to have this just so that we can be in compliance or at the very least just go into the end of this month um, with having a calendar that does begin with July one. Um, can I offer a friendly amendment to have this be voted upon in a meeting on Wednesday, June thirtieth? Would you accept that friendly amendment?
I, I would accept that, but I think if I'm, if I'm not wrong here, I believe that Dr. Miller, you're making an amendment to my amendment, yes, I accept that to my amendment. So, yes.
So what is the amendment?
Well, my amendment was for us to make a compromise that we would have a meeting in January, have one meeting in July. And now I guess with what, uh, Board Member Thomas is saying, that we would come to a consensus on the calendar by June thirtieth or meet on June thirtieth to determine that calendar. And I would also say the negotiation between, in, in, in with our board members can happen, you know, as, as we're saying, working together to find that consensus prior to the meeting.
Board Member, uh, hold on, Board Member Queen. Just a minute, uh, Board Member, uh, Boozer Strutter had her hand up first.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I just would like to make a final comment about, uh, to note that, uh, Mr. Valentine, uh, volunteered himself for this. I object to being voluntold by a colleague that I should work on this, uh, and then set up to somehow then be portrayed as if I am not being collaborative. So I would like to point out that dynamic that happened this evening. And for everyone to understand, to please not voluntold their colleagues for, for something you could have asked and given me an opportunity, but you did not. And I just need to point out that dynamic.
Board Member Thomas.
Yeah, um, I will, um, I think for, for the sake of moving forward, I will rescind my, uh, friendly amendment.
So right now we have a motion on the floor to table this until the volunteers, uh, Board Member Ahmed and Board Member Valentine come together and any one other board member, uh, who chooses to join that, that, um, that committee, um, until such time you come up with a calendar and request a meeting from the chair, to set, set up a meeting by the chair. Board Member Thomas.
I'm sorry, I just need to, um, lower my hand.
All in favor tabling this amendment, I mean, this, uh, this item, uh, the, um, calendar.
Ms. Queen's hand is up.
Open screen discussion.
I just have one question for my clarification. How many votes are we gonna need to get this counter? I just want to know so we can know how many people have to come back for the meeting that we will have. I'm just curious, how many votes are needed for the calendar?
It needs eight to pass.
So that means when we come back, eight colleagues would have to be able to be online at that time. I just wanted to remind each and every one of us, um, that moving forward, trust you if you wanted to get it done before July first. But okay, thank you so very much.
Okay, and Board Member Queen, you said eight members in attendance. You have to have eight votes. So because eight may be there, all eight may not vote. So let's, this clear, make cl- bring clarity to that. If there, we need eight votes.
Eight votes, okay.
And the student member cannot vote on this, I don't think.
No, she can vote on this. This is not the calendar for the school system. It's the calendar for the board meetings.
I think corrected. Thank you. All in favor, uh, oh, Board Member Ahmed.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, um, I, I'm trying to follow. So Ms. Adam Stafford has made the motion. Ms. Queen has seconded the motion. Um, Ms. Adam Stafford, could you repeat what the motion is? Just for my clarification to.
Yes, so, so my, my original motion is for, number one, for us to meet once in July and for us to also meet in January. And that we would, uh, have a group come together to work on coming to a consensus uh, by June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you. That, that's.
Okay, I'm kind of lost.
Point of order. The point of order is that the chair asked that this item be tabled until the committee, the volunteer committee comes together to come up with an amenable canal, calendar that the board can approve. It had nothing to do with extra dates in July and August and January. That was not the, the request of the board chair.
The point of, of back, I, I still have the floor, correct?
No, Board Member Queen had her hand up.
No, I just want to correct, um, what Ms. Williams said was what I was second, that we would table the motion, um, when Ms. Shayla said, "I." Um, when, when the chair said, "Well, we, can I get a motion that we table it?" And then Shayla said, "I," and I second.
Okay, thank you.
So, so just a point of order then. So what Ms. Adam Stafford is saying is the motion is different from, a- as a motion maker, is different from what other folks are saying is the motion. So it, I, I believe whatever Ms. Adam Stafford said is the motion, is the motion that's supposed to be on the floor. And then if there's something else, then someone can do something else, but I.
Can we come back to this item, please, board members? Because we have a lot of.
Madam Chair.
Uh, excuse me, we have a lot of, uh, uh, policy issues and, well, maybe not that much.
Madam Chair.
Uh, I'm going to recognize Mr. Burrows.
Okay, uh, colleagues, I think the motion is simply to authorize, um, Ms. Ahmed and Mr. Valentine and any other member who want to be involved to come back with a compromised calendar that can get the requisite number of votes to pass. Uh, and when they've reached that agreement, um, to, um, the board will have a special meeting, uh, in order to vote to approve the calendar. So if I, if I can just offer that as a substitute motion, because I think that's what everyone's intent is, and maybe it wasn't clear. But it's simply to authorize Ms. Ahmed, Mr. Valentine, whatever board member, uh, who, who, whatever other board member who's interested to work together, uh, maybe even over this weekend, to come up with a compromised calendar that can receive enough votes to pass. As soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Madam Chair, it's been moved and properly seconded that, uh, we table this until the volunteers.
Well, that's what I had said before. And I don't know what was said differently. And I was trying to take a motion on that. So with that being said, uh, Board Member Burrows, your hand is still up.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't take it down. Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded that this, the calendar be tabled until the volunteer committee comes together with a proposed calendar for the twenty twenty-two year. And we will meet at some point in July to vote on this calendar.
No, I don't, I don't add the last part. Uh, that was not a part of my motion. So my motion was exactly what I stated and nothing more.
When they, when, when the committee is ready, we will, and the request has been made by the committee to come back to vote on the calendar. That is when we'll come back. So if they could do it before then, fine. If they can't, then we have to move, we have to wait until they're done with their work.
We also have to consider that if we're going to have a full board meeting, it has to be posted. And we have certain, uh, number of days to put it on board docs, et cetera. So, um, that committee has to take that into consideration as well. Considering, uh, the motion made by Mr. Burrows to table it until the committee comes back, I'm going to ask for a roll call. All in favor to table it. Ms. Berkeley, call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Mrs. Ahmed. Ms. Boozer Strutter. Mr. Burrows.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Abstain.
Mr. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Queen.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Hi.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
And Dr. Miller.
Yes. It is, the motion carries that we will table this until the committee of volunteers come back with a calendar recommendation. Now we will move into new business, first reader, seven point zero. Uh, Board Member Ahmed, please introduce items six point one through six point seven under new business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe it's item seven point one through seven point seven. I wanted to just, before I introduce, briefly pause to see if anybody wanted, uh, if I could, uh, without objection, introduce all these items at once. Can you introduce them separately, please? Um, okay, like I, I will talk about each of the policies. I just didn't want to know if one was, if there was a request to pull one.
Um, uh, Madam Chairwoman, um, I wanted to move to pull the, um, uniform policy, or I had a question about it that could be addressed in second reader, but, um, that was the one I wanted to pull.
Okay, so I'll introduce item seven point two through seven point seven to the committee. Um.
Madam Chair, Policy Committee Chair, Madam Policy Committee Chair, um, can you pull the um, but, seven point four, the student demonstration? And read that one separate, do that one separately also.
Seven, uh, I would like seven point five.
All right.
That's policy development. Any others to be read separately? All right, Ms. Ahmed, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, I'll read, um, uh, my statement on these policies, but uh, motion can be made on the ones that were not just pulled. But I'll give an overview of, of all of the rest of the ones, um, or, or all of them, um, that have not been pulled. So colleagues, the board, the Policy and Governance Committee met virtually on June sixteenth with, uh, the following members in attendance, myself as committee chair, Joshua Thomas as committee vice chair, Pamela Boozer Strutter, Edward Burrows, and Nina Jackson. Amongst the items, the committee du- discussed the revisions in public comments for policy fifteen hundred, which is the P CAC policy, a policy fifty-one twenty-two, which is intrascholastic and extracurricular activities, academic requirements for participation. Uh, and I believe those are the ones that we have not pulled. Um, the committee voted unanimously to recommend that these revised policies be approved by the Board of Education and be forwarded to the full board at the June twenty-fourth board meeting for first reader. In addition to those policies, the board, uh, the Policy and Governance Committee of the board met virtually on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one with the following members in attendance, uh, all of the members. We discussed public comments and the creation of policy fifty-one fifty-one and revisions to policy fifty-one forty-three. The committee discussed the purpose and utility of these policies and subsequently the committee voted unanimously to move forward both policies to full board for approval at the June tenth board meeting. Uh, the board chair decided to remove those items from the June tenth ag- uh, agenda pending guidance from legal counsel on the policies and process. And to date, the PGCPS Office of General Counsel has not determined this policy to be, this policy or process to be inappropriate to the knowledge of committee leadership. And so therefore, the request is being brought forward again on behalf of the committee to recommend that the revised policies be approved by the Board of Education and forward to, to the full board at the June twenty-fourth, uh, board meeting for first reader. And so on behalf of the committee, I move for approval on item seven point two, seven point three, seven point six, and seven point seven. No second is required.
May I have a motion? I mean, a second, oh, you said no se- uh, no, uh, is there any discussion?
I'm sorry.
Board Member Queen.
I have one discussion. I think I've asked this before and I'll bring it up again. On one of the policy, and I didn't want to ask you just to pull it, um, unnecessarily, but the one with the parent advised the counselor, council, we do have one member already, and we already discussed that, that was voted on. Did you guys invite her to sit in on this meeting if you made adjustments to this policy? Did you guys invite her to sit in on this meeting if you made adjustments to this policy? Because she is the only member so far of that council that the board voted on and asked me as a whole.
Are you asking me or?
I'm asking the Chair, the, um, Policy Committee Chair.
Yes, Ms. Queen, uh, we did not specifically invite her. I am not sure whether or not she provided comments on the policy through the public comment period, though.
Thank you so very much.
So we're taking a vote right now on policy seven point two, seven point three, seven point six, and seven point seven. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? Is there any further discussion on any of those policies?
Yes, I, I wanted to respond to Board Member Queen. Um, if I'm not mistaken, uh, uh, Policy Director, Mr. Cooper, I believe that we did reach out to the applicant, um, or received her name. Uh, but I think that the important thing is that the, the actual committee is now defunct. Um, and so this is to revitalize the committee and the committee will govern itself. So any changes that needs to be made into the structure or how it has been previously, um, I think will be discussed amongst the members of the committee as people apply. Uh, and so it was open for public comment. I do believe that she, after that meeting, that, uh, she was reached out to. Uh, but there will be more opportunities to, um, continue to advise, because this is a committee that's formed by the community for parents, uh, and community members to have a voice in policymaking. And so this is something that we're required to do by the state of Maryland. Every board is supposed to have one, and we, we don't right now. It's defunct. And so I just wanted to make those notes for my colleagues.
Thank you so very much, and I, I am aware of that. And that's how we knew that, because she brought that point to us when we voted on air. Um, for Madam Stafford, before you were actually a board member, that was one of the reasons how we knew that it was defunct. And that's one of the reasons why I seem to really have a problem that we didn't involve her, because I didn't even know about it until she reached out to us. Um, so in saying that, moving forward, I'm going to vote on it. But moving forward, I think it would be really concrete to us to make sure that we are including her into this, because she was the one that suggested it. And when we realized and it was referred to the committee, um, that it was not, it was not an active committee that needed to be active. And she wanted to be a member of that committee. And we were not, we did not have members, and we should have had members. The county council should have put, um, appointed members. The school board should have had appointed members, and we didn't. And we didn't know these things until she sent us that information. So I think in knowing that and saying that, um, a- as a board, to me, we, we actually really should have included her in that. And I just wanted to make that known. I understand that, you know, we're still new to this and we're making change. But I just want to make sure that moving forth, that we do include her in this, because right now she is the only member of that committee. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor for policies? Seven point two, seven point three, seven point four. No, not, no, seven point one, seven, policy seven point two, three, six, and seven. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Any?
No.
No, thank you. Any, uh, abstentions? The, uh, motion carries. For those, uh, the motion passed. Okay, we'll move to item seven point one.
Yes, Madam Chair, the purpose of policy zero one one four on school uniforms is to provide guidelines for a school community that would like to establish a school site uniform program. The committee had met and voted to recommend that this policy be approved by the Board of Education and be forwarded to the full board at the June twenty fourth board meeting for first reader.
Uh, did you want to give a summary of what that bill, uh, that policy states, what changes were made?
Uh, Madam Chair, I gave an overview in terms of what the, the policy is about. Uh, if there are further questions, then those can be asked by folks, uh, on discussion. Um, and perhaps better suited to be answered by our Board Policy Director or the member that helped, um, bring this forward.
Board Member, um, Valentine.
Thank you. Um, and so this, this is a question that can be answered now or between now and, uh, when it's put on, on second reader. But as I read it, what this would do is by default, um, dismiss any uniform policy that we currently have, making every school in the district a non-uniformed school, and then have every school have to vote in order to determine whether that school would have a uniform. Is that correct or did I misinterpret that?
Correct. It is change, it, it will require an opt-in policy for uniforms. Uh, I can ask, uh, Mr. Thomas, Joshua Thomas, or Mr.?
That, that, no, that, that makes so, I, I just wanted to clarify, because, you know, that, that's where my, my concern is, where you would literally take the district. And there are reasons why schools decide to go with a uniform policy versus not. And right now, um, schools that do have a uniform policy and would not, and would like to move to a non-uniformed policy, there's a process for going about do that. And as you know, mo- majority of schools have chosen not to, and they have, you know, stayed as a uniform policy. I'll be, um, quite transparent that my child's school has chosen to go to a non-uniformed policy. But that was a, a, um, decision of, of the parents. And so I just want people to understand, uh, their implications of doing this, um, about how, uh, and why, why schools currently stick with the uniform policy as it relates to, um, the impact on, on parents, on students, on visibility, on, um, just the differences that happen within our socioeconomic district. And so, uh, just thank you for that clarification. I guess my question is, have you all factored in the long-term implications fiscally on parents who would have to, um, go about, um, budgeting for, um, sending their kids to school with non-uniforms, um, for, uh, one hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Mr. Valentine. We had a lot of different discussion on this, a lot, met very many meetings in which we discussed different items. I'd ask that board staff make sure that they, we add this as a follow-up item, so you can get it before second reader.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Board Member Queen.
Um, thanks so very much. Um, I just want, um, all my colleagues to know that this is a very touching subject for me. As the past P T A president of many P T As throughout Prince George's County, but one who has actually set the uniform policy at Central High School, who knew how important it was to have that policy, um, who also know now that the P T A is not strong enough. It's concerning to me, because a lot of our schools still don't have P T O's and P T As, um, that could represent. And when we set a precedent to say a policy that it had to be voted on by the parents, this will be changing a lot of things for a lot of schools. So I think we need to think about what we have in it. Um, as my colleague just said, Mr. Valentine, I mean, every school is different, um, in every community. But I can tell you in District Six and District Eleven, and some of my schools, um, in some of the areas, uniforms are needed. Um, it's helped the parents. Um, a lot of uniforms are donated, um, a lot of times, you know, by community organization, nonprofit organization to help. We still have a lot of homeless population, um, in my community where kids go and things are donated. Um, so we really need to be thinking about this when we say uniform, um, you know, getting rid of uniform policy across the board. I just want us to remember that, um, because it, this has benefited a lot of students. And if we take into consideration the large homeless population that we have in our school system, we're talking about, um, kids who may not have the clothes to come to school or be able to wash them. I know our school system has done a great job of putting washing machines. If I walked across my school and saw some of the washing machines that have been in some of the schools, and I was very pleased to see that, but, um, for kids who couldn't even wash their uniforms at home. So we have to really think about the hard times that have hit many people, even through COVID, and think about this decision that we're about to make to make this change in the school system. So I just want us to remember that, that we're not talking about our pockets. We're talking about the pockets of a lot of people who are still hurting in a society in our county where a lot of people are still unemployed. Well, not just jobs being cut throughout. We've heard people complain. I've heard Mr. Diggs say how a lot of people in the school system are losing jobs itself. So let's put ourselves in other people's shoes at this time and think about this before we make a decision like this. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Any other discussion? Uh, Board Member Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as Ms. Ahmed said, we had a lot of robust conversation around, um, this specific policy proposal and what the implications would be for the school district. Um, with that being said, uh, to Dr. Goldson, having served as a former principal, um, and obvious, you know, having knowledge of, you know, what our schools do and what measures they take, could you possibly speak to, um, some of the measures either you're personally aware of or heard that our schools undergo when they, um, come across a student who may not have access to school uniforms or may need help for one reason or another? Um, and maybe what that process or processes may look like?
Thank you, Board Member, um, Jackson. When we have schools where students, um, do not have a uniform, as Board Member Queen shared, we have lots of organizations that have donated uniforms. And we, in many of our principals, have a room that they keep, um, those uniforms in so that a student can access it. Utilize funds to pay for the uniforms for those students as well. Um, and then in some schools, um, Axon Hill is also one of those back in the day that allowed students, um, when they were leaving, um, seniors to also donate uniforms for a community service credit, um, that are not, um, tattered or severely worn, but that can be passed down to other students who need it, that can be placed in a room for use. Um, the ability, our current policy around uniforms clearly states right now that the community, the parents who have to pay for the clothes, whether it's a uniform or not, are the ones who make that decision. Um, and to create a policy that takes that away or then to put it back on the school system to pay for uniforms if they say they have extenuating circumstances. We already do that. Um, once a parent or a student has been identified who needs a support, who needs something, we take care of our students. So to say that we needed to change something, um, for a policy that was already working for those communities that wanted to have uniforms and for those that did not, um, is concerning.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Valentine.
Um, I, I want to be constructive and collaborative, so I want to make a recommendation. Um, we just voted on, um, item seven point two, which is Parent and Community Advisory Council. And so to per my comments and the comments of my colleague, Board Member Queen, this seems like a perfect topic for that council to discuss. And, you know, um, if, if, if it's, um, in the spirit of collaboration to say, you know, let's, let's, once we enact this, this council, give them the power to come together and discuss the impact, um, again, at home on students. Um, you know, this idea that, you know, once you do that, and certain schools are different. I understand, getting my children go to a non-uniformed school, but there are differences in the sneakers students buy and the, in the sneak, in the clothes, everything. And those differences have to be introduced slowly, so that we don't increase bullying and all the old things that come with it. But this is a perfect example of what the Parent Advisory Council can be, um, reviewing and then bringing back their recommendation to us, particularly on a topic, um, like, like this. And so I just, I just want to be collaborative. I just thought, um, if I'm watching at home, this is a perfect idea to get the parent and the community, uh, on board. And so I'll be voting against the, um, the policy, but I would be voting for having this Parent Advisory Council review this and bring it back to the board, um, in a, in a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Thomas.
Um, yeah, thanks, um, for recognizing me. So as, um, the committee member who brought this, um, forward in the first place, I just want to offer a little bit of, um, context, um, just to speak to some of the questions that have been raised about this. So first and foremost, um, you know, my, my intention around this was really informed by parents in my own community and in my district, um, where I, I heard on, uh, numerous examples of parents, um, feeling, uh, feeling frustrated by the current uniform requirements and the fact that they were expected to, uh, purchase new uniforms each year uh, as their children were outgrowing their previous ones. Sometimes we're talking about families of numerous students. So I want to be clear that first and foremost, this came from, uh, me hearing the concerns of parents in my own community. I also do want to recognize that I, I do understand that there are some benefits in place, um, with having uniforms. I think that there are definitely, there is definitely a case to be made for a mandatory uniform policy, for a voluntary uniform policy, as well as for a non-uniformed policy. So I do want to just understand and I want, want to state that I understand that. Um, I also just want to note that, um, what, what this does is not require, um, not require for of all of a sudden, um, the school system to immediately have to, um, require or to recover the costs of uniforms for students. But in fact, it would allow for the community, the school community themselves to decide to implement that uniform program if they want. Um, and so I think again, when we talk about being able to increase parent engagement, wanting to have our parents invested in what's actually happening at their specific school, this gives them the opportunity to make a choice on whether they want a uniform to be an additional expense in their own personal annual budgets or not. Uh, so it really is as simple as that. And I just do want to make that really clear. This gives our school community members an opportunity to be a part of that process as opposed to, um, accepting what's currently in place. And I do want to just know, right? Um, we, we know that the policy currently allows for schools to change the existence, the school communities to change the existing policies if that is the case. However, um, I think that that's something that many of, um, many of the, the public may not be aware of, uh, may not be, um, as willing to take on, um, such an endeavor, whereas, um, something that requires them to opt in maybe, uh, a little bit more. Now with that, all that being stated, um, I recognize that there, um, may not be enough votes to pass this and to move it on to second reader. Um, and so I will, um, make a substitute motion, um, to send this back to the Policy and Governance Committee um, for, uh, further review, um, to bring back to the full board.
Is that acceptable to you, uh, to the Chair of that committee?
Uh, this was a substitute motion, so, uh, it requires a second. This, this is not a request for an amendment. I think this is a substitute motion on the floor.
So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, Board Member Ahmed, I don't know the exact, um, correct terminology for the, for the, for the parliamentary procedure here.
I think you did right, Mr. Thomas. I think we're at the space where it just needs a second and I can.
I'll, I'll say, okay.
That's fine, Ms. King, go. Can you repeat the substitute motion, please?
Yeah, Ms. Berkeley, it's to, um, send this policy back to the Policy and Governance Committee, um, for, um, additional review, um, before sending it back to the full board. Thank you.
Board Member Queen, discussion?
Yes, um, it's, it's sent back to the, um, Policy Committee. I really want you guys to take in consideration, I think one of the biggest things I have with this policy is going forth saying that it will start off with all the schools being not uniform. So let me just lay it out to you guys, and no offense to you guys. I know y'all get offended when I say appointed, not appointed. And that, trust me, when I say things, I say it's not meant to be offended, but it may come out that way. A lot of you don't have kids. First of all, I haven't raised kids, don't know what it is to have kids. And so I just say things how I say it. So as a person who have raised a lot, and my, at, at one time have had nine kids in school at one time, uniforms are expensive, okay? And, um, don't let it be a husky child who need a fifty dollar pair of uniform pants. But trust me, it's still a lot cheaper than having to go and out buying clothes to last for ten days because you have to wash it. I think we need to take in consideration of parents. And I think one of the things that Mr. Valentine did suggest is let the parents, um, Advisory Council handle this also. Let them have a vice in on this. Until you raise kids, until you had kids in your home and know how expensive it is, um, every, I mean, and I just, you know, just giving you from my point of view is I have my minutes, my three minutes. You know, when it's, when it's summertime going back to school, I'm spending three to four hundred dollars on clothes, underwears, bras, and I'm going to say it, and then a hundred dollars sometime on a pair of tennis shoes, you know, for the kids. And we're talking each child, okay? So imagine if I didn't have to buy uniforms, I would be spending much, because you know how much Levi's and all them other designer stuff cost? So we have to really think about, and it was just said, if kids don't have these things, they're bullied, okay? And then they have to get their hair done, and then they nail base, they got to get their nail and their make face and makeup and everything. So this is a different generation. So we really got to think about what parents are going through, who are trying to have their kids to go to school, look presentable, um, and have it done at, at a cost that they can afford without their kids being intimidated, without their kids being bullied. without their kids being harassed. There's enough of that. Yeah, we do have online learning now, but it's not going to be forever. So I just want us, when we think about this, make sure we're, when we make these decisions, make sure you're talking to people who have kids. You know, make sure you know that experience of what it is to have to constantly, I mean, I have this eight-year-old granddaughter now and I had to go out and buy her more clothes. They're growing, they're constantly growing. Uniforms are different. So I just want to say that we need to be very confident when we're making decisions. We're making them for our scholars, but their kids in our future. And you've got to have a little bit knowledge and talk to parents who have actually gone through, who have raised these kids and who are going through this. And also I just wanted to add my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Can you repeat the motion again? Are we voting on Board Member Thomas's motion to send it back to the committee, just to be sure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of sending the seven point one, policy zero one one four, back to the committee? All in favor? Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries that bill will, I mean, that policy will be sent back to the committee. Now we'll move to seven point four, policy fifty-two eleven, Student Demonstrations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of policy fifty-two eleven, Student Demonstrations, is to establish the parameters by which students have the right to engage in civil discourse through the means of peaceful demonstrations. The committee voted to recommend this revised policy be approved by the Board of Education and be forwarded to the full board at the June twenty-fourth board meeting for first reader. And so I move for approval of this policy on behalf of the committee.
Any discussion? Well, may I have a motion first?
Madam Chair?
Our Board Member Williams?
I just wanted to, to state that this is always a great opportunity to have our students' voices be heard when it's an issue either locally, in the state or nationally. So giving the students the ability to be a part of a demonstration so that their voices should be, could be heard, I think is an awesome idea. And I'm glad that we have this policy. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Board Member Queen?
I just want to thank our student board member for leading this also. I just want to make sure we added that on. Even within that year, she was thinking about her peers. And I think that's very important. Excuse me, as our student board members come, we, we know that they're coming on here, not just coming on here to be saying that they're part of a board, but they're representing their peers. And I appreciate all you've done, Ms. Jackson, to represent your peers and to bring this change and realize that your voices do matter. And I thank you for your service again.
Thank you. Board Member Williams, is your hand still up? Thank you. All right, are we ready to take a, a vote on Board Pol, I mean, Policy Fifty-two Eleven, Student Demonstrations? All in favor? Oppose? Is that an opposition, Ms. Adam Stafford?
No, it's in support.
Okay, thank you. Any abstentions? The motion carries and the Policy Fifty-two Eleven, Student Demonstrations, has been approved by the board. Let's see, so the motion passed. Next is Policy Ninety-three Forty. That's item six, seven point five.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Policy Development.
Thank you. The purpose of Policy Ninety-three Forty on Policy Development is to provide a uniform format for the Board of Education policies and establishes processes by which policies are developed, implemented, monitored, evaluated, reviewed, and updated. The committee voted unanimously, voted to recommend that the revised policy be approved by the Board of Education and be forwarded to the full board at this board meeting for first reader. And so I move on behalf of committee.
Any comment? I mean, any discussion? Board Member Adam Stafford?
I just want to thank the Policy Committee for putting this forward. As a new board member, it, coming into this board is very confusing as to how to present policy, the process. It, it definitely needs streamlining and some type of formal process. So thank you for doing this and I will be voting for it.
Board Member Boozer Struther?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note that I serve on the committee and I did work very closely on the original version of this and I much preferred the intent of the roles of the CEO and the Chair and the Executive Director that's been written out. And I, I do think this weakens some of what I thought was appropriate for the, how we do policy. And I just wanted to, to note why I'd be voting no.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Board Member Williams?
I just had a question about some of the ramifications of the changes that are put in place. There appears to be a shift in the authorization and of how policies are reviewed and put in place. So can you talk about the implications and what, what comments did General Counsel provide on these, on these changes?
Sure, Ms. Williams. I can speak a little bit to the ramifications. General Counsel did provide information and their feedback to the committee and those notes can be found online on the board meetings or the committee meetings in which this item was discussed. In terms of the ramifications, essentially this will allow for the committee, instead of coming, instead of lengthening the process by approving the policy to go out to the board for public comment, the board approving it to go out for public comment, then it going for public comment, then coming back to committee, this authorizes the committee to be able to proceed in, in collecting public comment on policies first. And so this will hopefully streamline the process. The policy development policy also was altered to be able to allow for a space for the Board Policy Director in the policy development process. Previously, that was not as clear as it is now. And so this makes sure that there is that role for board office staff to provide that input. Those are, I think, the, but in terms of ramifications for the process, this will streamline the process because public comment will be able to be moved forward quicker.
Yeah, and, and I understand about streamlining and trying to do things much quickly. But in policy, I think we need all the time necessary to make sure that it goes through the proper people and organizations and groups of people to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks. So to, to do something quickly isn't something that we really want to do with policy that could alter the, the way we function as a school system. So I, I'm very cautious about trying to, to speed up the process of building policy because it could have some, some real detrimental ramifications if something gets passed that we said we wanted to skip this step in order to, to get it through quickly. I, I, I always think time is, is important in reviewing policies. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I will say that when it comes to it coming to the board for public comment, in the first place, that was not a practice that we had. That was a practice that was frankly suggested by our previous executive director that was incorporated in the policy when we first brought it forward. So this is not necessarily changing it significantly. It's, we've only actually had this process of it coming to the board for public comment since the policy was first enacted. So maybe like a year, maximum two, that we've had this type of a system. And in terms of it, it's, rest assured, this process will still take a couple of months at best to make sure that policies go through. It's not like it will change it so that it could happen overnight. No.
Yeah, again, I just caution us to change the process. Our previous executive director was, is an attorney who had several years of experience in Montgomery County that brought that experience here. And so I'm just a little bit cautious for changing something like that. Because this, this is one of our most important things that we do as a board member is set policy and do our budget. So I'm just very cautious about that.
Thank you. Board Member Adam Stafford?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, again, as someone who's new to the board and someone who introduced policies this year, it was just very confusing to not have some sort of systematic way in which we introduce and move policies through and gain stakeholder input. I think that we have a lot of miscommunication between ourselves, administration, whoever, because there's no clearly outlined policy that really demonstrates how to move through, and at least for me. And so I will say, I, I think that the work that the committee has done to create something that will be streamlined and that can be used for, you know, in the future. I, I think this is something that can only help us operate with more efficiency. So I just wanted to say that again.
Board Member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, I, I just have to say for the record, this exists. We did tremendous amount of work on the policy on policies. I, I, I just have to correct that. So there is no misunderstanding that this is an existing policy that was very clear and has been incredibly helpful to this, this board. And, and I want to thank Ms. Ahmed for her leadership on this for the last two years. I think this is very, one of the most rewarding collaborative experiences that, that I've had. So I just need to correct that this exists.
Thank you. Board Member Queen?
Yes, I just have one question concerning this policy. And this, I guess it has something similar to what Ms. Boozer Strutter was talking about. I noticed it took out CEO and put in policy director, but could they not work hand in hand?
Yes, Ms. Queen, there are several times in the policy where it says in collaboration with the CEO. And so that is written in policy that the collaboration should occur.
Okay, so I, I, I mean, I see it, but then I see it in places where it's just taken out altogether. So the places where it was moved in ninety-three forty, it looked like where you have CEOs slashed out. My question is still, could they not work in collaboration where it says CEO and policy director? Where it will be working hand in hand with the policies?
Ms. Queen, I could, I, I don't see the exact spaces where you're talking about, but if you would like, we can touch base afterwards. Make sure whatever needs to be addressed can be addressed between readers.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Board Member Adam Stafford?
I just have a question. Were all of the comments that were suggested accepted by the CEO and was the CEO taken out of this, this version? I'm just confused because what I'm understanding and seeing here, that the comments were accepted.
Yes, Ms. Adam Stafford, I mean, we put in, or in a couple, at least the places I'm seeing, Board Director of Policy with the advice of the CEO, Board Policy Director with the advice of the CEO, those were additions that were made to the policy. So.
So we're working together collaboratively, in a collaborative fashion, with the CEO at every step and this was accepted? I'm just trying to understand.
From my perspective, we've added the pieces about the advice of the CEO and the intent is that board staff, specifically the policy director and administration should be working together when it comes to.
Okay, so this is fostering collaboration, working in tandem together as stated here, that they would work at every step together with the administration. So I'm just, I'm just kind of getting, I'm not confused. I, I do see here something that is in effort to, to bolster greater collaboration. So we're working together to, towards our goal, right, of producing and revising policies that support students. So.
Board Member Queen? Oh, excuse me, I apologize. Dr. Goldson was first.
Thank you. And I should have raised my hand. I do have that feature. I apologize. If there were true collaboration, then the CEOs wouldn't be stricken from the policy. So it's not about intent, it's about what should be written so that it can't be misconstrued.
Board Member Queen?
So, as Ms. Ahmed said, you know, I wish you guys would take it back because I'm looking under the implementation responsibility and I see where the CEO is slashed out and, you know, it's, it's a certain areas where I really feel like it need to be a cap collaboration with the CEO and the Board Policy Director now that we have one. I know at first we didn't have one, but I still believe that whoever that person right now could say he should work with our CEO in collaboration. So to say in collaboration, it should be done and it should be on here in collaboration. So I just want to say that point. Thank you so very much.
Board Member Bob Matt?
Thank you. Ms. Queen, I see what you're reading. And what, what it says is, at the end of the school year, the Board Policy Director, instead of the CEO, the Board Policy Director will provide the Policy and Governance Committee with a schedule of proposed policy changes, provisions, plans for the following school year based upon consultation and advice from the CEO and the Policy and Governance Committee Chair. And so.
Put down a four point five.
Four point five, it says, again, the Board Policy Director, instead of the CEO, in collaboration with the CEO, will develop. So the, the CEO, we have added and put in the advice of the CEO in every process. And if there's no intent, and there, there's no place that I can see where the CEO is completely stripped of all, everything, all authorities. And in fact, several places it says consultation and advice of the CEO. Thank you.
Board Member Burrows? I didn't understand you. Board Member Burrows?
I moved for man to back to committee.
Oh, you moved to move it back to the committee?
Second.
It has been moved to second to pull policy ninety-three forty back to the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition?
No.
Abstentions? It has been, the motion passes.
We had one, one no.
Who was that? I didn't hear.
Remember, I'm it.
Oh, okay, well, okay. The motion carries to send this back to the committee. And that is policy ninety-three forty, ninety-three forty. Okay. That's it then. Now we move to, there are no other items for the non-consent agenda. We will move to eight, eight, nine point zero. Motion to confirm actions taken in the executive session. As indicated at the beginning of this meeting, there was no, we could not, we did not get the vote to go into executive session, yet we spent a lot of time in discussion relative to legal counsel and parliamentary procedures. With that, there was no executive session, so there's no actions to be confirmed. The next item is, are there any follow-up items to June tenth, the board work session? If there are, they will be posted on to board docs upon receipt. Last item, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, I see Nana's hand up.
Yeah, so I forgot to mention it during my earlier remarks, but by way of Ms. Berkeley, I got my board plaque. And so I just wanted to publicly thank board leadership, Dr. Goldson and the entire board for this little gift. I didn't expect it. And so I just want to show it off and, and thank you all.
Hold it up again, Nana. Thank you. And thank you for your, your service in spite of the pandemic. Poor Nana never got a chance to sit in the auditorium. So I hope to see you tomorrow and other board members at the swearing in ceremony for the board, student member of the board for twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two. Good night. Oh, did we finish taking the vote? All in favor? Everybody opposing? Good night.
See y'all for the end of the year celebration.